Good. Okay. Good morning, everyone. We'd like to call this public meeting order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before we get started, I just want to welcome everybody and thank the South Abington Township officials for having us up here today. We're really excited. I just want to recognize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of South Abington Township, Giles Stanton. Is Giles here today? I don't see Giles here. Okay. The Vice Chairman, Mark Doherty. Mark? Supervisor Donald Snyder. The Township Manager, Joanne Payne. And the Township--
There's Joanne.
There's Joanne. Hi, Joanne. And the Township Solicitor Attorney, Bill Jones. So again, we just want to thank all of them for their support in having us up here this morning. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. This is now the opportunity for anyone who's here this morning to address the board on agenda items only. So would anyone like to discuss the agenda items? No? Okay. All right. So we have three proclamations that we're going to present today. The first one is a proclamation declaring June 3 through June 10, 2024, as Child Welfare Professionals Week in Lackawanna County. And we'll ask Barb Durkin, our Health and Human Services Director, to come up in a second, but I just want to take a second and read this proclamation into the record. Whereas, the week of June 3 through June 10, 2024, has been proclaimed as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week by Governor Josh Shapiro. Recognizing the efforts of child welfare professionals serving the children of Pennsylvania, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does the same today. Recognizing the women and men who staff the Office of Youth and Family Services, and whereas, every day in Lackawanna County, children are at risk of child abuse and neglect or have been removed from their homes because of these circumstances. Since 2017, Lackawanna County has seen an increase of 183% in child referrals and a 200% increase in family referrals. Currently, the Office of Family and Youth Services averages over 9,000 children and 4,000 families referred to the agency per year. And whereas, child welfare professionals work in difficult and emotional situations with children who have been victimized by physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and other forms of maltreatment. The work of a child welfare professional may require him or her to enter situations in which one's personal safety may be put at risk. And whereas, child welfare professionals selflessly undertake the endeavor to protect Lackawanna County's children. Their efforts have averted innumerable injuries and deaths of children in Lackawanna County despite the dramatic impact to their personal lives. And now, therefore, we, Bill Gohin, Matt McGloin, and Chris Churimak, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim June 3 through June 10, 2024, as Child Welfare Professionals Week in Lackawanna County. And before I call our Health and Human Services Director up, I had the opportunity, and I just saw her walk in, Danielle-- Danielle, right? I want to make sure I didn't forget your name. Danielle Taylor is a worker in our Office of Youth and Family Services, and I had the unique opportunity to spend a day with her, which was one of the, if not the most eye-opening experiences I've ever had in my entire life. So I went on the road with her for most of the day, and everything that I just read in that proclamation is true. We have serious problems in this county with our children and our families, and these people are literally on the front lines every single day. They don't get the same recognition as police officers, and police officers get it rightfully so, and our EMTs, and our firemen, and our fire personnel. But these people are out there every single day sacrificing their own personal lives, and they have their own families, but they're focusing on the families and the children of this county. So I'd like to give them all a round of applause. For all the work-- And if we could have Barb Durkin-- I saw Barb someplace. There she is. Come up and just say a few words.
I really don't have much to say. Obviously, the work that the child welfare system does is really important work, especially now. I'm honored to help transition that office into a good direction, but I really want to applaud the work of the staff that are here from the Office of Youth and Family Services. So I would appreciate if those that are here would come up, not asking me to say any words, just come up and be recognized for the hard work that they all do on a daily basis protecting the youth and the families of Lackawanna County.
Thank you.
Kelly and Danielle--
Can we move the chairs back and say their idea?
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Sorry, I don't want to sound--
Yep.
I'm not tall. But I do have heels. So a little bit taller today.
Let's step down one step that way.
One step.
Everybody look at me and smile. Take a couple. Two more.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second proclamation this morning is a certificate of recognition for the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging Farmers Market Nutrition Program. We would like to recognize the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging by presenting this certificate of recognition. Representatives of the department that are present here today are Susie Zin-- Susie Zin-- Susan Maraglia, sorry, Lauren Fitzgerald, and Jennifer Zarcone. And I'd like to also thank Sarah McDonald, the Director of the Department, for her continued efforts on behalf of our older adults here in Lackawanna County. In 2023, Lackawanna County had the number one-- number one in the state-- redemption rate for farmers market vouchers across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The Area Agency on Aging distributed farmers market vouchers to 33,585 older adults during the summer of 2023. The Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program partners with local area agencies on aging to distribute vouchers to adults over 60 years old from June through the end of September each year. Vouchers can be redeemed for fresh, healthy, locally-produced foods at farmer markets statewide, boosting senior health through improved nutrition and social interaction that a farmer market provides. Distribution for 2024 will begin very soon at various locations throughout the county, and we'd like to wish them well for another successful year. And I'd like to ask, again, our interim Director of Health and Human Services, Barb Durkin, if she'd like to say a few words about this program.
So I'm actually going to turn it over to Sue to say a couple of words. On behalf of the Area Agency on Aging, I'm not the best spokesperson for the work that they do so tirelessly. So I'm going to turn it over to Sue.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words about last year, and certainly this year. What we hope to do is certainly that and more, for more seniors, for to increase the participation of the eligible seniors to receive these vouchers, and also for the markets to receive-- for to have the extended sales at their stands, and to increase the awareness of these places for seniors to receive the nutritious produce, the fruits, the vegetables that they may be at risk nutritionally.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if all of the representatives from the department could come up, would take a picture.
Thank you, Doctor.
Susan.
Thank you, Susie.
I kind of like it.
One step this way.
One step.
Yeah. This way. We should probably look at-- Here we are. Do we look here? Smile. Take a couple. Two more. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
we are honoring today, and I know many members of his family are here. This is a really special occasion. And before I mention Sergeant Dennis Booza, he has been working for Lackawanna County Sheriff's Office for 40 years, and I just want you to think about that for a minute. He started in 1984 with Lackawanna County. And in today's world, I think it's pretty rare for somebody to be in one position for 40 years. That's dedication, that's getting up every morning to protect and serve the residents of Lackawanna County. I've only gotten to know Sergeant Booza over the last few months since we took office. Every morning, this guy's got a smile on his face. Everybody in the building respects him, and it was a pleasure to work with him. I know a lot-- a lot of people here know him a lot longer than we do, but just in the few short months that I've gotten to know him, he's just an unbelievable person, an unbelievable resident of Lackawanna County, and 40 years of dedication to this county, he deserves the recognition. So let's give him a round of applause. And Sergeant Booza, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Yeah, I'd like to--
I'm sure he has a lot to say after 40 years of working--
I don't want, but--
Sergeant, I was born in 1989.
I'd like to thank you all for this-- thank you all for this recognition. It was an honor and a privilege to work with Lackawanna County. There were so many wonderful people, and they've treated me, as you can see, my colleagues. Sheriff McAndrew, fantastic people to work for and work with, and it's been a privilege. Brian, he was so good through all the COVID and everything that we had, and it was wonderful. My family. You're getting me, guys.
The first time I've ever seen him with a loss for a word.
But yeah, just thank you. Thank you all.
Well, you got 40 more, because I like coming in to see you in the morning. I try-- I don't help you with the crosswords, but I know you're pretty good at that.
So Sergeant, if you'd like to come up with your family, we'd like to present--
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's up, guys?
How you doing?
Hey, other girls still like--
What's up, guys?
How you doing?
Yeah.
How are you?
Hi, darling.
Hi.
Hi.
So now you got him full-time.
Oh, yeah? Really? Now you make me feel old.
How are you?
How you doing?
Where do you want--
Get the kids over here.
Don't sit in front of the grabber.
Not you.
Yeah, right?
And have-- well, let's have his wife get here too, right?
Yeah.
She's short enough.
What if we catch a bug?
She's short.
You don't know.
Everybody look at me, please, and smile. Take a couple. Keep smiling. One more. Very good.
Well deserved.
Yes.
Sergeant, want to get a picture with your friend?
Yeah.
Brendan.
You gonna take one on the sheriff's?
Do you think you want to be in that one too?
No, we don't--
No, no, no.
Okay.
You gonna go out there?
Oh, all right.
Yeah, but later.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Commissioner, thank you.
Sheriff Commissioner, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Jace?
Take care, Mark.
Okay.
That was great.
That was great.
Forty years, man. You're not even 40 years old.
I was born in 1989.
I was a kid when this--
That's right.
Really? Oh, boy. Okay.
He's not retiring or anything, is he?
No, he's not.
You have to take him out.
Oh, boy.
We'll just wait a minute until--
Okay. Everyone.
That's right.
Susie.
That's it.
Susie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
I kind of like it.
Well deserved.
Yes.
Well deserved.
Sergeant, want to get a picture with your friend?
Yeah.
Brendan. You gonna take one on the sheriff's?
Do you think you want to be in that one too?
No, we don't--
No, no, no.
Okay.
Okay.
You gonna go out there?
Oh, all right.
Yeah, but later.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Commissioner, thank you.
Sheriff Commissioner, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Jace?
Take care, Mark.
Okay.
That was great. That was great. Forty years, man. You're not even 40 years old.
I was born in 1989.
I was a kid when this--
That's right.
Really? Oh, boy. Okay. Okay. He's not retiring or anything, is he?
No, he's not.
You have to take him out.
Oh, boy.
We'll just wait a minute until--
Okay. Everybody want--
That's right.
Susie.
That's it. Susie.
We're going to get started with the business part of the meeting. So this is Ordinance 24-0143.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner. This is the second reading of Ordinance 293. Upon its conclusion of it, the Commissioners will be voting upon it. In ordinance, the Board of Commissioners, the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, is setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation notes of the county in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14,500,000 to provide funds for a certain project of the county which consists of the following: refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bond Series A of 2016; two, refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bonds Series B of 2016; three, refunding the portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bond Series of 2017; and four, refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bonds of Series B of 2020; and five, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the notes. Whereas, the county is determined to accept the proposal from PNC Capital Markets LLC for the purchase of the notes, now therefore being enacted and ordained pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, the Board hereby authorizes and directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation notes in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14,500,000. The Board determines that the debt to be incurred pursuant to this ordinance, which will be evidenced by the notes, shall not-- shall be non-electoral debt of the county. The Board shall and does hereby accept the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase of the notes in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance. Each series of the notes when issued will be a general obligation of the county. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized and empowered and directed to contract with Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dumbarton, Pennsylvania, as the paying agent. All expenses incurred in connection with issuance of the notes shall be paid out of proceeds derived from the issuance of the notes. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severally to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and the sale of the notes and the financing of the project. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the CFO of Lackawanna County, Mr. Dave Bolzoni.
Good morning, Commissioners. So after all these wonderful proclamations, I get to rain on everyone's parade. The Board of Commissioners is considering the approval of a $12,280,000 transaction which will refund payments of four series of debt. This transaction is more commonly known as a scoop-and-toss transaction. Issuing new debt to pay debt service on previously issued debt is called a scoop-and-toss because it allows the borrower to scoop out their debt and toss it into the future for repayment. This transaction was identified as a form of monetary relief when constructing the 2024 budget. This transaction is the final in a series of budget adjustments to achieve operating balance for this fiscal year, including a $3 million ARPA allocation, $2,334,918 in healthcare savings from a prior year, $1,220,322 in organic savings achieved through line item adjustments, and a 2.7 mil increase in real estate taxes for operating purposes, which is the equivalent of about 3.8 million in additional revenues. This transaction will add the required $5,503,308 to balance that budget. Of the total amount of this transaction, $12,280,000, $5,503,308 represents the last budget component. $4 million will fund the capital budget, and the remainder will be used to offset the 2026 debt service requirement and to also fund the soon-to-be-considered single-point paying agent account.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Bolzoni?
How do we plan to repay this?
This will repay-- will be repaid in the debt service requirement over the next six to 12 years of the amortization of each one of those four components. It's already been factored into the amount that's required even going into next year. So keep in mind, our debt service requirement was enhanced for next year by the 0.7 mil increase that we had in real estate taxes for debt service for next year. So we're trying to factor that into whatever that amount is that's going to be required for 2025. But there are going to have to be adjustments made in the debt service requirement going forward, as there would be the case with the portfolio anyway, because of whatever the annual requirements are for the county.
Any other questions? Just a question. Devil's advocate, we don't do this, and we all vote against it. What happens? Five and a half million dollar hole in the budget, correct?
Well, what I'll say is, this transaction is being considered out of necessity. Okay? It doesn't solve the problem, but according to the Greek quote, it allows you to fight-- to live to fight another day. You don't do it, you immediately have a $5 million hole in the budget, which you can add to the $10 million hole from the payables that were carried over. That's the part where we live to fight another day. That has to be resolved as well. Doing this creates some pretty significant problems for the county to be able to get through this budget year.
So now, this is going into our-- one of the next things we're going to be talking about, but with the baseball stadium and that bond issue, whatever we're doing there. You know, on page 28 of the audit, I was talking yesterday about the due back to the county. I know the amphitheater owes the county $3 million in some odd dollars, and the baseball stadium owes the county back $500,000. So, you know, there's $3.5 million that we could apply towards some of this if we could get repayment back to the county. I'm hoping that maybe this-- when we do this for the stadium, that maybe that's in the picture, maybe you're repaying the county back what was owed. You know, because I'm looking at-- you know, I just keep-- I'm not voting for a tax increase, and this is leading us down that path. It's like getting another credit card just to keep ramping up what we already owe. I know you have an impossible job, but I haven't seen where we've saved a penny since January 1 of this year.
In 2022, we-- the county had a $4 million preliminary budget deficit. In 2023, it was an $8 million preliminary budget deficit. 2024 was a $15 million preliminary budget deficit. We are trying to slow, at this point, a runaway train. We're looking at every possible-- every possible opportunity that we have in order to create some stability in this process, hence the reason for the Strategic Management Planning Program initiative. These problems are not going to be solved overnight. This is one tool that allows us to get through a budget year. Our debt levels are reasonably high, but they're manageable. As I pointed out to the Commissioners previously, the duration of our debt and the debt service requirements drop off significantly in 2036. They go from $20 million to around $7 million as we speak right now. So it's incumbent upon us to really try and hang in there to get this straightened out so that we can achieve that reduction in millage that's assigned to debt service going forward. Some of us may be around for that, some of us may not. This is long-term planning. This is future planning. This is just one tool that allows us to get there. No one likes to borrow money necessarily when you're not getting something back for it, but what we have is a relatively critical situation, and we're trying to solve a problem. This is one tool to do so.
Well, I know we worked very hard on our-- for the 2023 budget. We were able to actually deliver a balanced budget.
With some one-time revenue sources.
Right, with one-time revenue sources.
Which is part of the problem as well, Commissioner. One-time revenue sources have a role in constructing the budget, but when you're relying on them consistently, and in some cases, when that reliance offsets whatever the organic adjustments are in that budget, it really creates a problem, because those revenues, as I stated, they're one-time. They're not coming back.
Right.
And we should consider this a one-time revenue source as well. We don't want to do scoop-and-toss transactions every year.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
May I have a motion to approve Ordinance 293?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah, I'm a no.
The ayes have it, and the ordinance has been approved. Resolution 24-0144.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 3272231372758, inclusive $9,666,226.52. The county's electronic funds transfer, including all payroll accounts, totally $5,954,983.26. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll undertake a motion to approve the current payables.
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0133.
This is a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the county agreement by and among the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, and the multi-purpose stadium authority of Lackawanna County and PNC Bank National Association. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna enacted Ordinance 221 on August 27, 2012, which imposed a hotel room rental tax within the county. And whereas, the multi-purpose stadium authority of Lackawanna County has determined to issue its hotel room rental tax revenue note to fund the costs of repairs, renovations, and other improvements to the Lackawanna County Stadium, PNC Field, located at 235 Montage Mountain Road Music, Pennsylvania, 18507. And fund debt service reserve fund for the note and the authority's outstanding hotel rental tax revenue note Series 2019, and pay the costs and expenses of issuing the note. And whereas, the county and the authority and the PNC Bank National Association, as lender and purchaser of the note and as counterparty under a swap agreement with the authority, desire to enter into a county agreement to provide for the procedures relating to the collection, deposit, dispersment of revenues generated from the tax pursuant to the ordinance in support of the note of the authority. Now therefore be it resolved, Board of Commissioners--
The county's electronic funds transfer, including all payroll accounts, totally $5,954,983.26. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the current payables.
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0133.
This is a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the county agreement by and among the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, and the multi-purpose stadium authority of Lackawanna County and PNC Bank National Association. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna enacted ordinance 221 on August 27th, 2012, which imposed a hotel room rental tax within the county. And whereas, the multi-purpose stadium authority of Lackawanna County has determined to issue its hotel room rental tax revenue note to fund the costs of repairs, renovations, and other improvements to the Lackawanna County Stadium, PNC Field, located at 235 Montage Mountain Road Music, Pennsylvania, 18507. And fund debt service reserve fund for the note and the authority's outstanding hotel rental tax revenue note series 2019, and pay the costs and expenses of issuing the note. And whereas, the county and the authority and the PNC Bank National Association, as lender and purchaser of the note, and as counterparty under a swap agreement with the authority, desire to enter into a county agreement to provide for the procedures relating to the collection, deposit, dispersment of revenues generated from the tax pursuant to the ordinance in support of the note of the authority. Now therefore, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, as follows. The county agreement is hereby approved. The chairman of the Board of Commissioners or any other commissioner of the county is hereby authorized and directed to sign county agreement, and the chief of staff of the county is hereby authorized to fix the seal of the county here, there, too. The county, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners and any other commissioner of the county, the chief of staff, the county treasurer, and any other proper officer of the county are authorized and directed to execute and deliver all such additional documents to effect the issuance of the note and transactions contemplated by this resolution and the county agreement. Nothing in this resolution or in the county agreement shall constitute or create a liability of the county with respect to the note. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Mr. Chairman. Reverend Stevenson Lee, here is Mr. Brian Kozlowski.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is relating to the financing that you're aware of for the stadium authority, for the improvements that Major League Baseball has requested and required the stadium to perform, or the authority to perform there, to continue to have Major League Baseball at the stadium. These are all, this debt is secured solely by the hotel tax revenues, as is the 2019 deal. There is no obligation on the county for anything related to that debt. This agreement is really just procedural, and it's in a, quite frankly, the agreement's in place right now relating to the 19 deal, so we're updating it to include the new deal along with the 19. Nothing changes procedurally. The county collects the tax, they send it over to the bank to pay debt service. Same thing that's been happening for probably 20 years related to that tax and the improvements at the stadium. Happy to answer any questions, but I do want to make a point, and obviously it was in the paper as well, this is no obligation on the county, no obligation for the county to pay the debt.
Thank you, Brian.
Any questions?
So, I did mention to Dave about that, and I know you don't know particulars on the budget, but I'm hoping that maybe there's money in there that maybe could settle that debt owed back to the county. We'll see.
Yeah, I apologize. I can't answer that.
No, I know that.
But obviously, the staff and the authority.
This came to us, I mean, when did this process start? This was when they came to us about making these changes to the stadium, a year and a half ago, I guess.
Yes. I mean, they've been looking at those improvements, and I guess doing the survey of all the major league stadiums for a couple of years now.
So it's definitely, when you're in the facility, and unfortunately, the fans don't see this, and that's the unfortunate side of it. But it's stuff that, if we're going to have a baseball stadium, we're going to have the Yankees there, or any major league team, there's things we have to do. Again, like, I wish the fans are able to see all these improvements, but if it keeps the Yankees here and keeps baseball going, it's an important, it's an important thing for, for the stadium.
And the other point is, and you're aware, under that lease agreement that we have with the Yankees, there are capital improvements that needed to be made to the stadium over the next couple of years, just under the terms of that lease. So this, this set of improvements is also covering those expenditures, and we'll take that piece off the table. So it's really just accelerating what we were obligated to do, you know, under the existing documents.
The authority was required to spend the $12 million three years from now. But Major League Baseball's obviously moved that up. Nothing's coming from the general fund. You know, this is, and I'm happy, you know, since we took over January 2nd, you know, Commissioner gone, we were kind of able to, you know, help support the stadium authority and, you know, get, get this done for Major League Baseball to, obviously to keep the Yankees here. You know, it's, the way I look at it is, you want to get people to the stadium, you want to get people in the seats, this is what it takes. You have to provide for the players. We're losing players down to Somerset. That's where they're going. The training facilities are better there. The weight room's better there. Everything is better there. So we're losing out on thousands and thousands of people at these home game stretches here because kid, or players that are in the show are now going to Somerset. So by doing this and breaking ground after the season, and hopefully having it ready for next year, we'll be able to get a lot more people up there at that stadium and really, you know, create what already is a wonderful product, but obviously continue to, to make that better, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0133.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0134.
This approving the area agency on aging professional service agreements, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the area agency on aging professional service agreements for care for health and human services research and action, and the county department of arts and cultural, as attached. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Health and Human Services, Ms. Barb Durkin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to speak on area agency on aging contracts. These are simply renewal contracts. The first one is a contract for the area agency on aging with the Center for Health and Human Services Research and Action. This helps with the older Adult Advocacy Center. That is a partnership between the area agency and Telespond. Chirisa has been very helpful in getting that project off the ground. So this is simply a contract renewal. At this point, it doesn't cost the county any money. All of the money for this contract comes directly from the state. So happy to answer any questions on that one, unless you want me to move into the, or you didn't handle the other one yet. Are there any questions on that?
Any questions? No, I think this is good. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-134.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0135.
This is approving the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Agreements, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the agreements for inpatient treatment, outpatient treatment, and prevention between Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs and its providers for fiscal years '24 through '25, as here, as attached here to adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Once again, here is Director Durkin.
Again, thank you, Commissioners. These are just our annual renewals for drug and alcohol programs for both Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. We're obviously a joiner, so, so these contracts will extend to Susquehanna County as well to support residents there. There's no additional, there's no cost to the county for any of the drug and alcohol services that we provide to residents in both counties. All of the money comes from the State Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs. We have expanded some contracts based on need. We've, have more recovery house contracts this year than we have had before. That's a new license service by the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, and obviously we know we have a, a crisis here with housing instability, so this will help get additional residents into housing. We've expanded some of our inpatient and outpatient drug and alcohol treatment programs, but nothing out of the ordinary. The majority of the contracts are all the same. We simply expand services based on what the needs are. Happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0135.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0140.
This is approving an OIFIS provider agreement, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreement for fiscal years '23 through '24, with pathway to everyday life, human services, as attached here, too. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Once again, here is Director Durkin, and she has four more after this.
Thank you again, Commissioners. This is, we're looking to enter into a new contract with a group home provider. This is a service that we need for youth who, who need this level of care. This is funded or reimbursed by the state at 80%, so then 20% the county has to cover, and the daily rate is $310, $310.27, and that's a per-day rate. This is not a service we use all that regularly, but it is a service that we need to have in place. So I'm just looking for the Commissioners to entertain us entering into a contract with this new provider. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0140?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0137.
This approving detention center agreements, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office and Youth Family Services Detention Center agreements for the fiscal year '24 through '25 with the County of Chester, Central County's Youth Center, Jefferson County Juvenile Court, as attached here, too. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, Ms. Director Durkin.
Thank you, Commissioners. These are simply contract renewals. I know we do not currently have a detention center here in Lackawanna County, so obviously we are looking to, to continue our contracts with other counties that do in fact have detention centers. There is reimbursement from the state for this level of care, as well as there's a county share. Each detention center has their own per-day cost. Again, we don't utilize detention centers to, to a large degree, and obviously, we hope in the future to have one here in Lackawanna County, but it is a necessary service to have for, for our adolescents that are deemed delinquent at this point. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions on this one? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0137?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0138.
This approving OIFIS professional service agreements, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office and Youth Family Service Professional Services agreements for the fiscal year '24 through '25 with the following. Anthony LaBassi Forensic Counseling Associates LLC, Jewish Family Services, Marley's Mission, Scranton Counseling Center Women's Resource Center. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, Ms. Director Durkin.
Thank you, Commissioners. These are contract renewal, renewals. Obviously, they have do-not-exceed amounts. There's reimbursement from the state for these services. Many of them are case management-related or counseling services for individuals connected to the Office of Youth and Family Services who need certain specific counseling services. These are not out of the ordinary and just our normal renewals at this point. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this?
Nope.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0138?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0139.
This approving OIFIS provider contracts, be it resolved. Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services and Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreements for the fiscal year '24 through '25 with the following. The City Mission Living Stones Incorporated, Clear Vision Drug and Alcohol Treatment Services, Family United Network, Family Care and Children Youth Incorporated, Institute of Family Resources, Jewish Family Service of Greater Harrisburg. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. This will finish off Director Durkin's appearance in front of you today.
Thank you again, Commissioners. The first couple, Bethany Home, City Mission, Living Stones, and Family United, and Family Care for Children and Youth are foster homes that the county contracts with for the Office of Youth and Family Services. Their reimbursement rate for foster care is 80%, meaning the state will pay 80%, and then the county is responsible for the, the other 20%. Obviously, our goal is not to have youth in foster homes, but this is a need moving forward and will continue to be a need. So we're just looking to entertain contract renewals for those foster homes. And then Clear Vision and Drug and Alcohol Treatment Services, again, are just contract renewals. They're providers for delinquent children that need to reside in a residential treatment program. The reimbursement rate for that service is anywhere between 60 and 80%, depending on the type of service that is provided. Again, we don't love to have youth in, they're called RTFs, however, this is a service that's needed for some of our higher-risk or higher-need adolescents that are connected to our, to our office. So just looking for your support for these contracts. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0139?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0141.
This approving the ARPA nonprofit funding. Whereas Lackawanna County, Lackawanna County is a county of third class operating and governed pursuant to Home Rule Charter, Lackawanna County and others are affected, were affected, and significantly impacted by the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic, which arose and was declared in March of 2020, whereas many nonprofit agencies worldwide, and particularly in Lackawanna County, were faced with devastating economic and financial challenges and losses resulting from the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. These nonprofit agencies here in Lackawanna County experience a continuing need for financial and economic assistance so that they may continue existing and providing services to the residents of Lackawanna County. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners is hereby enter into an agreement with the Holy Rosary Athletic Basketball Association, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization to benefit children and families in Lackawanna County. The Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award funding to the following, from the following American Rescue Plan Act project. The Holy Rosary Athletic Basketball Association to perform roof replacement and repair at Mary Mother of God Hall in line with the guidelines of the American Rescue Plan Act program to assist families in Lackawanna County in the amount of $200,000. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby direct, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, to sign and authorize all documents related to this project. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 5th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Kristen Magnada.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to talk a little bit about this project and provide some background. As you all know, and all three Commissioners, when I came on board, we talked a lot about the utilization of ARPA funds and how it was key to all three of you to use these funds for very impactful projects in the community. The Holy Rosary Athletic Basketball Association will act as the, the monetary responsibility and holder of the funds to help with the Holy Rosary Hall, which is now the Mary Mother of God Hall. And to give you some insight and why this is so detrimental, this is one of only two locations regionally that entertains and has the responsibility of well over 500 children and families in the region to provide them with recreational opportunities such as basketball and other sports. Over the years, many athletic buildings have closed down due to dilapidation, to sale, and this one in particular is extremely affordable to families. Some of the competitors out there charge well over $100 per child. Holy Rosary Hall is usually $80 per child, and, I'm sorry, $60 per child, and then $80 for each additional, I'm sorry, for an entire family. So $80 cost for as many more kids as you have. This, the roof on the Holy Rosary Hall will likely not last one more summer, I'm sorry, one more winter, and that would put well over 500 children and many, many families that stretch all across, not just in the greater Scranton area, but outside of Scranton, and not provide a cost-effective location for recreational opportunities for these children. We thought this was an excellent, excellent use in the community of ARPA funds because it's directly to help the children and to provide them a safe and reliable location for them to engage in, in sports and other recreational opportunities. This $200 in collaboration with what they just received through the state with an LSA grant of $100, or $100,000, will bring this entire project to completion. So that will save the Holy Rosary Hall, not just for this recreational opportunity, but also for what has been many, many generations of their church picnics and their ongoing community engagement. And I just wanted to mention, the 501(c)(3) that will help us, the, the county with this opportunity, is the Holy Rosary Athletic Basketball Association with Mr. Jay Marks, and we've worked with him in the past for state grants, and that is how we will take these federal funds and state funds and be able to get this project completed at Holy Rosary Hall before this next winter. Any questions on that? But we're really looking forward to this, and it's super impactful for the children of the, of Lackawanna County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you think it's going to cause any problems to us with other church groups and things? I know we don't give money to churches, but this is a whole different situation with, I mean, that basketball, or the, the facility's open to everyone.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I'm, I'm happy we're doing this, but I just hope that it could get a little doing this, but I just hope that it could get a little difficult having to say no to other people, but...
And I, and I think, and not to speak for all of you Commissioners, but I think we take any inquiries as they come in, and the first thing we do before we lean into ARPA money is we lean into all of the state and federal grants that are already available. And our department actually helps facilitate and write grants first. So usually, that's the first step that we take before we would lean into ARPA funds, and our department is ready and willing and to help any organization that would like to do that.
And this is, this is why we're all here at the end of the day, just to serve our communities, serve the area in which we live, to serve our home, right? I mean, this, this is a place where, as you mentioned, Chris, and they serve over five hundred kids on a Saturday. I mean, I grew up playing basketball there. I played St. Anne's, I played Holy Rosary, I played Holy Rosary, and I played Holy Cross. Incredible memories growing up. My parents sitting in the stands, competing, playing basketball, meeting new people, making friends. We had the opportunity to attend a picnic there, I mean, last year. It's a staple in the community, and it's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing.
And Commissioner, just to highlight your point, is many of those locations that you mentioned that both you and I played at are all closed.
No longer exist.
No longer exist. So it just puts an extra emphasis, and I think it's important to highlight two things. Not only are a lot of those locations that used to be available to many generations of us closed, but also some of the alternatives are just not a cost-effective for folks that have two, three, five children. So, and they're all wonderful, wonderful facilities, but they just happen to serve all different, you know, families that have different abilities to, to pay for recreation for their children.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion to approve twenty four, Resolution twenty four dash zero one four one.
Motion, second.
On the question, on the question, just to reiterate what some have already said, people from not just North Scranton, but from all over the city and all over the area use this hall to play basketball and do other recreational activities. And I really feel that keeping this facility open is so important for youth development in the city of Scranton and across Lackawanna County, and it benefits children and all the families who utilize it. So I think this is a great project. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty four dash zero one four two.
Approving a consulting services amendment. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby ratified a consulting services amended agreement with MacRith Consulting LLC of thirteen forty-five Fieldbrook Drive, York, Pennsylvania. Additional six-month amendment commenced on July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four and shall continue through January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five at a cost of ten thousand dollars per month. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that or answering questions is our solicitor, Mr. Donald Frederickson.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, in January of this year, we hired on Beverly MacRith as a consultant primarily to our Department of Human Services to advise us and consult with regard to restoring our full licensure to the Department of Family Serv, Youth and Family Services. That's an ongoing process. It's still being evaluated, and we're still working towards that goal. The contract was for six months originally. This will extend that contract for an additional six months through January of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty four dash zero one four two.
Motion, second.
On the question, on the question is Attorney Frederickson said we initially approved a six-month contract back in January. This is going to grant an additional six months. As everyone is well aware, when we took over as county commissioners, the Office of Youth and Family Services was in crisis mode. And one of the first steps that we took was to hire Mrs. MacRith to help us try to turn things around for a few different reasons. Number one was to put a fresh set of eyes on the agency. Bev MacRith is a former secretary for the Department of Human Services, a deputy secretary of the Office of Children, Youth, and Families for the State, and a former executive director of York County Human Services Department, and I think most importantly, was a former supervisor and caseworker for York County Children and Youth Services. So we have made a great amount of progress with a lot of help from people within the county and including Bev MacRith so far in the last six months, whether we talk about the new community pathways model, hiring more caseworkers, taking a different look at the support from our friends in the Civil Service Agency in Pennsylvania. But we need another six months to continue this progress and work towards getting the license back. And I know that when Bev MacRith worked with Luzerne County, she saw them through that entire process, and they did get their, their full license back. So, and I appreciate all the work that she's done so far. Anyone else on the question? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty four dash zero one four eight.
Approving appointments to the Conservation District Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby reappoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Conservation District Board: Alena Roberts, Ten Mink Lane Scout Township, Pennsylvania, one eight four four seven. It's a four-year term effective immediately and to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby appoint the following individuals to Lackawanna County Conservation District Board: Commissioner Matt McGloin, one twenty-three Wyoming Avenue, Scranton. It's a one-year term, effective immediately and will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty four dash zero one four eight.
Motion.
Second, on the question.
Yeah, so that's the board that I sit on. Am I being removed from that board as well?
Yeah, so just so everyone knows how this work, works, county commissioners have a seat on the board, and they get a one-year term. So we're just going to rotate through commissioners, just to provide a fresh set of eyes and a different perspective on the board. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. The next one is a motion, Motion twenty four dash zero one three six. This is a motion to award the Nancy K. Holmes Branch Library upgrade renovations to KR Construction Group Incorporated, thirty-three Aberdeen Road in Moscow, the lowest and most responsible bidder at a cost of five hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ten cents. May I have a, a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, we have the Chief Executive Officer and Director of the Scranton Public Library, Scott Thomas, to, to speak.
Thank you. What this project does is make our branch in Green Ridge, Nancy K. Holmes' branch, built in eighteen ninety-one, compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, which it is currently not. And so we're installing, we're going to install a ramp and a new entrance and a new restroom and general upgrades inside, and energy efficiency. Half of the project is paid for by Keystone Grandford Library Facilities, and that's a Pennsylvania Department of Education grant. And with a lot of these state grants, we have to go through municipality, which is why we're going through the county. And the other half, the matching part, was raised by the Scranton Public Library. So we raised the matching fund. So we have all the money in hand. And so we had five bids, and basically, TR construction was, KR construction was the lowest. And so we checked references, we checked finances, we did all that kind of thing. And we, the Scranton Public Library Board of Trustees feels that they are indeed a responsible bidder and can indeed accomplish the project per what was in the original bid documents. So we, we would recommend the passage of this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Scott? Okay, great job on this. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Okay, that concludes the business portion of the meeting. This is now the opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the board? Sure.
Up there?
Yeah.
How you doing? I didn't realize there were so many agencies here in Lackawanna County.
Could you just, could you just state your name for the...
Okay, Billy Andrews, Carbondale. It's come to my attention, there was a surveying crew, I live on Gordon Avenue, and I believe the county's going to pave, repave Gordon Avenue. Okay. And I like to comment that the, on the road crew, they do an excellent job. Snow removal and sorting. I don't have a problem with that. Okay, but I understand they're going to pave it. Do you have any idea when?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but we can find out.
I'm sorry, Mr. What, what road is this? Gordon, G-O-R-D-O-N. I don't, that's not a county road. Yes, it is. It's a county road, yes. You plow it and you send it. Okay.
Sir, if you can leave your phone number.
Okay. I will. Let you know. Okay. What, what is happening, okay, in the last year? Because it was a zoning change, there's been a lot of sewer baggage back, backup. My son back in December had major damage to his house. And the city's been down there probably at least six times that I know of, I'm not home all the time, with the ram jet, whatever, fixing, you know, unplugging the, the main line. Okay, we pay a sewer bill, and we also pay a sewer bill to the city because they own the sewer system. Okay, when they made this Lackawanna sewer thing, city already had their sewage, so they, the city of Carbondale has to maintain it. Okay, and that's a problem. And I would like to maybe have the city of Carbondale verify or do something. I think the county should do it before you pave. Okay, have an engineer or somebody check out the sewer line. If it has to be replaced, be replaced before you pave it. I hate to see it paved and a year later dug up. Like I said, it's a major problem. They've been there six times that I know in the last year. So I would say that's major. If you can just look into that and maybe have the city do an engineering, get, get somebody on record that, you know, that it's either correct or it's not correct and needs to be replaced. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Sir, we'll get back to you if you could just leave your number, phone number with Mr. Jeffers.
Mike seven zero, four six eight.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? No? Okay. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner McLean.
Just real quick, we've continued our coffee with the Commissioners that we've been doing for the past few weeks or so. Spent time in the tribal area, the Moscow area. It's just, it's been really fantastic. As a lot of you know, Mark Cordelli has really helped, helped lead with that, our Director of Community Relations. He's done a tremendous job. And it's just, it's a great way for us to stay connected, collaborate effectively, and be able to strengthen our, our relationships with, with our local officials throughout Lackawanna County. We have some more in the upcoming week, so really looking forward to getting out of the office and, and spending time throughout the county. And lastly, my five-year-old is graduating from pre-K today, so if you see me sprint to the door once this meeting is over, it's because I gotta, I gotta get to that. So that's all I have, Commissioner, on.
Thank you. Commissioner Chirmack?
Next thing you know, it'll be senior high graduation.
That's what they say. That's what they say.
Over the weekend, we, if, I hope people got to the Heritage Fair. We had perfect weather. I, I think it turned out great. The setup for everything, that the food trucks and the food in the circle and the carnival grounds and the water park, it seemed to all really flow well this year. And it's a small group of people led by the infamous James Rodway, but they did a tremendous job. They worked very hard, and I, I think it was a huge success. So congratulations to them, and thankfully, the weather was good. Sergeant Booza, he, he left the building, right? He probably back to work, you know, he doesn't like, but congratulations to Sergeant Booza and forty years. He's just a great guy, and appreciate having him there. So, you know, just to add, you know, I, I see that now I've been taken off another board. You know, I, I was elected as, by the people to do a job for the people. And I take that job extremely seriously. All I can say is that, you know, I'll continue, you know, this, Lackawanna County politics is a blood sport. Sometimes it's very cutthroat, but I will continue to work hard for Republicans, Democrats, independents, continue to do my job to the best of my ability. I appreciate being here. I, it's an honor to be here. I'll probably still attend the Conservation District meetings because I really like that group of folks and the work that they do. But just, just to say that, you know, I will continue to work hard. So I appreciate everyone's support.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to take a minute to sound the alarm bell once again on the finances of the county, and also to give an update on the county's participation in the Strategic Management Planning Program with PFM. Early on in this administration, and it's been well documented and well reported, Commissioner McGloin and I were shocked to find nineteen million dollars in unpaid bills along with a fifteen million dollar structural deficit. Needless to say, we inherited an unbelievable mess. We immediately applied for and were accepted into the Strategic Management Planning Program through DCD. That's leadership. The STAMP program, as it's called, provides financial assistance to counties to develop and implement a five-year financial management plan. In our case, in the county's case, because of the severe financial crisis, a six-month emergency plan we, has to be developed to get us through the end of the year, and that's being developed as we speak. Along with the financial plan, and this is extremely important when we talk about savings and efficiencies, a management audit is going to be conducted of every department and every row office in the county. PFM is a group of financial experts. They were selected to conduct this initiative. They are currently in the process of building two financial projection models, a cash flow model that shows if and when the county is at risk to run out of cash this year, yes, to run out of cash this year, and a multi-budget model that projects financial results on an annual basis over five years. When we walked in to this office, as far as I could tell, there was no actual plan to get us out of this mess. This is going to be the blueprint to turn this entire operation around. We will have a public meeting with PFM once the emergency plan is ready so that we can inform everyone of what the next six months will look like. And I'm hoping that that is complete later in June or in July. But I just want to make sure that everyone here and everybody who may be watching on TV understands how bad this actually is. I know I've said it before, and I know Commissioner McGloin has said it before, but it bears repeating. We are as close to rock bottom as you can get. But I just want everyone in this county to be assured that we are working every single day to straighten this mess out and to get the county back on the right track. Thank you. Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.